Once they see it, yeah?
Open in square, anybody? It's six thirty, so I'll welcome everybody to Prescott Town Council. I guess we will call them into order, and can I have a mover and a second to adopt the agenda, please? A motion of course is up here, agenda be adopted, that's present. Councillor Osterhund, Councillor Shankar, second. All in favor? Thank you. Any reparations of interest?
A different conflict on seven point two. This doesn't matter if it approves or not.
Thank you, Councillor Shankar. Anyone else? No? Presentations? We have no presentations this evening. And we have a sizable delegation tonight from the Curling Club. I'd like to welcome the President, Mr. Gary Alberts. And the hour behind him, I see a lot of the board members of the Curling Club and some former board members as well. Well, so welcome you all. Gary, for taping this, it's shown on our own website, starting on Tuesday afternoons. And we've had some complaints about volume, so by all means, speak up. The microphone is there, and the volume is yours.
Well, thank you. Your worship, Mr. Chairman and Councillor, thanks very much for the opportunity. Thanks for the introduction. Obviously, some of our members are here, and the board of directors, most of them are here, including the past president and a long way in. And I would add that I have full support for membership to be there. Everybody had a chance to tell them not to come, and nobody did. We have ice. We've been making ice for almost two weeks, so tomorrow we paint. And by the end of the day tomorrow, it will look like curling ice. Our season starts October the fifteenth. And I've got membership packages available. I've already given one out tonight, so come to see me if you need a membership. And our winter pole curl program starts on October twenty ninth. I'm here to propose that the town include a curling rink into the planned arena complex. Our club has operated in town here since eighteen ninety-three. And we've been in the current building since the mid nineteen forties. Currently, the club is operated and maintained by a talented and dedicated group of volunteers. And so far, we've been fortunate to have the skill sets available within the membership and their willingness to volunteer service to keep us going. And as you all well know here, it's increasingly a challenge to maintain the building of this age. But we've been doing what's needed. We aren't experts in maintaining buildings. But over the past six years, with the help of contractors, when necessary, we've replaced the pipes under the ice. We've made a general, had a general interior facelift. We've installed new insulation on the west wall. We've replaced sections of roof, along with many other smaller improvements. We've reduced our energy consumption by adding controls to the refrigeration plant. We've installed LED lighting throughout the building, including the icehouse. And this past summer, we installed a brine filtration system to extend the life of our equipment. So we've been heating up, but it's an ongoing challenge. As far as operation goes, we do have a typically run a small cash surplus. And we are setting aside every year what we can for the inevitable capital expenditure economy. My concern, and it's shared by the board and the members, is one of sustainability. How long can we continue maintaining this ancient facility with essentially an all-volunteer workforce? How long will we be fortunate enough to have willing folks with the needed skills and expertise within the membership? Volunteers making ice and maintaining ice during the curling season, organizing events, hosting bond steals, that's not an issue. That comes with the territory. We enjoy it, and frankly, we're pretty good at it. But longer term, the sustainability of the building is the concern. We're close six months out of the year. We've got a sand floor in the icehouse. There's no air conditioning, so it's not at all usable this summer. In fact, it's just a liability to us. We pay taxes all summer long. We pay taxes all summer long. The building is not accessible. There are some things we can probably do to improve that situation with enough money, but there's not a clear path that we could ever be fully accessible. So we were concerned about the sustainability of the current facility. If we maintain the status quo, we're likely never going to be fully accessible, nor will we ever be usable for more than the winter season. So the opportunity of the arena project is a chance to act now to capitalize on the synergies of combining a curling rink with an arena. There's facilities and expertise that can be shared. You know, obvious example, of course, is the refrigerant plant. An arena attracts out-of-town visitors for hockey and skating who would discover that Prescott has a curling rink. Surprisingly many folks don't realize that. Adjacent facilities expose more of the public to curling, the potential to increase our membership and grow our sport, and vice versa. Just by way of information, Curling Canada was reporting this year closed to two million curlers in Canada. And the biggest growth is really encouraging, is the under twenty-five category. Aside from ice, a curling facility needs a bar, a banquet area to run events. In a new facility, these would be available for the town's exclusive use during the off-season. If there's a concrete floor in the icehouse, a new space for summer sports and events is created. As far as club assets go, we've got a center located close to downtown Carson Land that could be transferred to the town for its use. We've got equipment to maintain curling ice, and we've got a knowledgeable, dedicated set of volunteers. Now, I'm here to talk about the curling rink, but one can look at this as an opportunity to expand the scope of this project to be more of a full recreation or community complex that maybe serves more than just hockey, skating, and hopefully curling. There's models around the area where curling rinks are built adjacent to an arena. And the Curling Club operates within a town-owned facility. I was at an event in Elmont a couple of years ago, and the curling rink and community center there are owned by the town. They share a common wall and a refrigeration plant. I spent a fair bit of time talking with the club president there to review how they operated and I learned quite a bit about that operation. But my key takeaway was that they were able, the curling members, were able to devote all their volunteer time and energy to promote and grow the sport. They weren't having to fix roofs or plow driveways or parking lots and that kind of stuff. They were able to concentrate on the sport and showed in their membership growth. Some information about us, some stats. This is from two thousand and nineteen. We're currently registering, but last year we had a hundred and seventy total members. It's probably interesting to know that about half come from town in Prescott, about forty-eight percent. About a quarter, twenty-four percent, from Edwardsburg Cardinal. And what's saying again, twenty-four percent from Augusta Township. And we have about four percent, and one of them's here from Rockville. We're close to Rockville anyway, Mary. Forty-five percent of our members are seniors. I think that's an important stat as well. Now, some of you I look up and I know have curled, and you understand that curling is a very social sport. On Tuesdays and Thursdays mornings, we often have at least forty-eight senior men out, some even more who are former curlers. Will come out. We fill two drawers, and we'll enjoy coffee and interaction before and after the curling. Our mixed leagues on Wednesdays and Fridays include socializing, often with food after the curling. The day ladies and Thursday night ladies do the same. Monday morning is the same with senior men's competitive. They stay for coffee. And in the evening, the open competitive league will enjoy drinks after the curling. Our mixed bond steals at Christmas, the wives' competition in the New Year, and our closing mix usually sell out in our good day of curling and socializing, usually across three generations. Not a lot of sports where you have three generations playing together and socializing together. We also have a youth curling program that's important, I think. That's Sunday afternoons. Jean is here to run that. We have, last year, we had twenty-one Little Rocks. That's your six to twelve-year-olds. Fourteen Banners. That's the thirteen to sixteen-year-olds. We also had a junior. We provide coaches. The coaches are all volunteers. They've been trained and certified by Curl Ontario. We also provide practice ice time to the curling teams at the South Brentwood High School and St. Mary's Catholic High School at no charge. Fullford Academy and St. Lawrence Academy have provided ice time at a nominal charge, along with volunteers to help with their athletic programs. Interesting to note that some of the graduates in our youth program that are currently curling on university teams. The youth curling season ends with a family day where everyone curls, parents and children together, in a friendly competition. The last year's winner were the parents. In addition to our in-house events, we run bond steals that attract outside teams. We'll bring in up to twelve teams from other areas, typically from Kingston to Cornwall, north to Ottawa, and occasionally New York State. We've had, well, the Little Rocks run a bond steal for our youth late in the season. The ladies run an invitational bond steal, and Robbie Burns bond steal, that all bring in outside teams. Our men's invitational is a two-day event, and many teams in that one stay in the weekend. We also have teams from ladies' bond steals. It's a one-day event, but they stay the weekend too. Maybe the ladies can spend the weekend there. So, and in addition to that, the seniors have a home-and-away series of friendlies all along the St. Lawrence, from Gannon Oakway to Cornwall. So, but once every third Wednesday morning, there'll be three teams arrive here for a game. And while the teams are here, they buy gas, they frequent restaurants, bars, they stay at the bed and breakfast of the Doers Inn. So they do provide some economic benefit to the town. So we provide youths, and we provide families, and we provide seniors with an important, affordable, recreational, and social opportunity. We support our local businesses as much as we can in sourcing our materials for maintenance and supplies for the bond steals and events. People come here from other centers for our events, so we are a driver of some level of economic activity in the town. So we believe, firmly believe, that the Curling Club is an asset to the town and the area, but we really are concerned about sustainability. People who come to this area looking to relocate with young families or retirees moving here evaluate recreation and social opportunities. And curling checks all of these boxes. So a new curling facility is only that, six months out of the year. The rest of the year, the town has a facility that will put a meeting space, a center for events, or indoor sports. And maybe it's a catalyst, as mentioned earlier, to consider other facilities as part of the complex. So in whatever form it would take, a new curling facility would put our club on a sustainable footing and position both the club and the town for additional growth. And with that, ask any questions?
Thank you very much. That's certainly a good advertisement for the Curling Club this season, if nothing else. Any questions from the members of the council here, for Gary, who is here? Going once? No? Uh, Councillor Shankar? Maybe I missed it, but how many full-time members do you have?
One seventy. Last year, currently counted this year.
And that doesn't include all the extracurricular students in the high schools?
It does count the schools, and, you know, includes the Little Rocks and the toast program. It does not include the schools and the Fullford Academy and whatnot.
Now, okay, Gary missed it. One thing, as I can recall, because normally you donate five hundred bucks towards it, and then a busload of Scottish curlers visit the club two years ago, three years ago. They do that every ten years. They come, and we've had them twice now, and so we also bring in, the Curling Club also brings in people from not only the U.S., but across the ocean. It's a very interesting concept because when I saw you were coming tonight, I took a look through our recreational master plan, which we paid a good chunk of change for, and we did a couple of years ago. Unfortunately, this was done while our rink was down the first time for cleaning purposes, basically. And we had received it before it actually fell into disuse. So some of the things that are in here, unfortunately, aren't really applicable anymore, simply because we don't have a rink. But it does state quite clearly in there that the planning that we should do for a rink, and they suggest up to five years and an occupation of that facility in the five-to-eight-year timeframe is for a recreational facility. What we've had designed and what we're proposing to build is a rink with a walking track, which I think is pretty much any rink a community builds these days, has a walking track around it, and a community room. It's still basically a rink, though. In the future, what we are intending to do, if things work out, is to redo the ball fields around that soccer fields or whatever, and it will become more of a facility. But your proposition of adding a rink on there certainly would add to the usage of that thing on a year-round basis, because there would be more space that people could use, and locker houses start with space for a lot of things that they do. I think it's an idea worth exploring. It's rather late in the game, but I don't hear any fast ladies singing yet. It's pretty quiet. So I would like to suggest that our CAO, here, Mr. Armstrong, who has been kind of spearheading this project in the last couple of months, who was certainly a major part of the planning for it before that, take a look at your proposal, see if at this late date it can be accommodated without a change that's going to set us back timewise. I know, given some comments that were made a month or so ago, that we have adjusted the plan somewhat to accommodate a future second pad if that becomes necessary. So we'll have to look to see whether this would affect that. Mr. Armstrong, could you do that?
Yep. Excuse me. I have counsel's direction, absolutely. We had a brief conversation today with our engineers, and we, so counsel's so wants, we're happy to continue that conversation with the engineers and then for that, if it's feasible.
Very good.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A couple of comments. First, I want to thank everybody for coming out tonight. You guys run probably the finest small-town curling club in eastern Ontario, not the province. Great history. It's a great group, and I couldn't agree more with what Gary said. It's so difficult for any small, whether it's actually a church, any sort of small community center, curling club, it's so difficult now, because it's so expensive, to maintain the building. Again, it's spending more time on the building itself and raising money for that than you do actually enjoying the game and promoting the game. So anything we can do, and I think we've proven that in recent years with money we've given, we've helped with the club that issue up front a year or two ago. We helped out with the drainage. So anything we can do, but there's, I'll just be, I'll be kind of blunt about this. There's kind of a good news, bad news situation here. The good news is you guys have come forward to us. I think this is a fantastic dialogue we need to have. And the other good news is, as Councillor Calvert-Chamberlain just mentioned, we did expand the scope of this building with the engineering to accommodate a second ice pad and added facilities. So we are already looking at the potential for a phase two. So that's the good news. I think the Curling Club and expansion there would fit in under phase two, which we can start looking at, you know, at almost any time here. But the bad news is we're a long ways down the road in the engineering of this building, so it would be very, very difficult, if not absolutely impossible, to include an expanded scope that would include a curling arena with the grant applications due in November twelfth. But again, I would say that your proposal tonight and some supporting documentation would help us even more to get that grant money, because we're again building the case that this is going to be a huge recreational facility for Prescott, Augusta Edwardsburg Cardinal that includes hockey, it includes figure skating, it includes curling, hopefully eventually. So I think, you know, it's a really good time for you guys to help us with that application, because quite frankly, if we don't get that federal provincial money, it's not going to be a rink anytime soon here. So we're kind of all in on that. I think we've got a very, very strong application. As everyone knows from the presentation at council a couple of weeks ago, we're over one point five million dollars in private money. There's a lot of confidence there that we will hit the three million dollar target. So I would suggest this be the start of the dialogue tonight. We get some information on what you need for that potential expansion, so we could possibly build that into the infrastructure. So we're talking about larger gas lines, the electricity and so on. So when the time comes, everything is laid out, and we plop a curling rink down, plop a second ice pad down for hockey. The sky's the limit for expansion there, as long as we have, you know, the money going forward. Right now, the focus is on that base building, which would be the foundation of everything. So, you know, I don't want to be too negative tonight, because I think this is absolutely fantastic. And I, personally, just speaking for myself, anything we can do is a fortune. It'd be great. But I really see that that would be more of that phase two. And the other good news is, of course, the club is worried about sustainability and rightly so. So, I mean, in a few years, we could maybe work together and add that as part of the phase two that we're looking at for the building. So this is good timing for you to come forward in some ways, bad timing in others, but it's all positive. And then I think it really bolsters our application and helps us make the case to the province and the feds beyond that that we really deserve that money here, because we've got a lot of users that want to use this new facility for hockey, for curling, for skating, for the walking track and everything else. So just want to thank you all for coming tonight, and I think there's really good dialogue, and we can move forward together on this. Thanks.
Anybody else? Mr. Armstrong, you indicated that you could provide us with some information as far as how this would fit into the plan that we have. We may have directed to do so. Well, in that case, we have an opinion from Mayor Todd that this is past the point in time where this could be added into this particular construction. And we have the information from our CAO. They give a direction from staff, or from staff, from council that proceed to look into this with no guarantees, of course, the time they come, where we have to put the proposal forward, without any future addition to it. But it is to do so in each direction. So if anybody would care to move any motion that would allow Mr. Armstrong to do so, I would be glad to hear it. Very good. Theresa, go ahead a second.
Mike, Mr. Osterhund, thank you very much. I guess the motion would read that we give council, not council, staff's direction to consult with engineers in regards to the feasibility of adding a curling rink to the proposed arena project. Is that already okay? Would anybody mayor Todd give you that?
I'd support the dialogue, but I don't see how we, quite frankly, it takes months to design buildings like this. I don't know how we could have the engineers design a curling complex and add it on to this building in time for the application deadline of November twelfth. I don't see how it's physically possible. But if it's a dialogue with regards to phase two and working together and everything else, I think that's great. I think we could really plan. But to include in this building, for this application for November twelfth, I mean, we're talking three or four weeks, and we're looking to submit by about the end of October with a meeting scheduled with the Ministry of Infrastructure for the last week of October, we push that out as late as possible. I don't see how we, I don't see how it's possible. It would also put our costs up and impact our private donations in the plan there, which is, of course, that three million is a share of roughly eleven million, we believe, in building the cost. As is now, you add a curling complex here, I mean, I don't know what you're putting up for cost, but it just, I just wouldn't want to lead anyone to believe that. I just don't know how that's possible. I'm supportive of the idea, but we're at a time.
Could we should include for the possibility and consideration for a phase two? In the phase two portion of, of potential phase two? Somewhere in there, a phase two in the motion reference.
Do you have a suggestion?
So far, I've just had that council direct staff to consult the engineer for feasibility to add the curling to the proposed arena projects. We could add in, in the second phase of the project.
I thought in either phase one or phase two, does that cover? Because if in speaking with the engineers, it becomes obvious that it's going to be impossible, timelines to do in one, then we're covered with basically a fourth phase two. Is that, would we accept the meeting?
No, because it impacts on all the donations as well. You'd have to rejig all the private donations, because it would put everything up. And then we, like, this is a lengthy conversation, how we raise that extra money. Because I'm assuming you're talking a couple million bucks for a curling pad, maybe more. I mean, I can't see it being cheap. So this dramatically changes the entire scope of this, the project. That's what I'm concerned about. Not trying to be the negative guy, but we're three to four weeks away from submitting this proposal. And the key thing is right now, we get that money and we get that, because then it opens up the possibility for a curling rink there in the future, which I think makes perfect sense as the older building, you know, sort of evidence it's usefulness is what I'm getting from Gary and everyone tonight. That's the concern, four, five, six years down the road. It's not immediate. So it gives us time.
The thing is, though, we had a rink designed, and it was designed very quickly. It was also changed very quickly to accommodate the possibility of a second pad. And the change was very minor. It was a matter of increasing the size of piping. And I believe moving the zen bowling room to another side of the building or something like that. What I believe, we're not talking about building plans here, we're talking about the engineers looking at the building and the design as it sits, and seeing if a building the size of a curling rink could be attached to that. And given the square footage that you might require, and I suspect Matthew can consult with Gary on that. You likely just have a square footage. I don't see us looking at a long thing here. To me, this is a very short investigation to see if it's possible. And it may very well not be for this phase, but we have put in phase two in the in the wording, and I think that would cover it. As far as fundraising goes, we do have a very, very qualified and dedicated fundraising group. Raising funds for, I've heard the word used many times, and by yourself, Mayor Todd, a recreation complex. The recreation complex that we have now is a rink, a walking track, and a room to rent out for folks, for folks to be used commonly. This would certainly make it look more and be more serviced as a recreation complex and not just a rink. So personally, I don't see what the problem is for directing staff to look into the situation. We've had staff look into things many, many times in the past. I haven't found out. We haven't done anything about it. Or staff has said, okay, well, this is a good idea, but we can't do it this year. Financially, though, I think maybe a couple of years down the road, it's a good idea. We can plan for it. But things have a tendency to get passed off around here, passed over, passed along, and people come and go, and then all of a sudden, they just disappear. We don't see them again. And I think, since these people have had the decency to come here tonight, since Gary's had the, taken the trouble to put this together, that we owe it to them to look into it. Looking around the table here, I know Ray's not here tonight, but I'm not sure about, because it's Osterhund and yourself. But each one of the rest of us who belong to the Curling Club at one time or another, we know how much of a social club that it is. It's not a club where you're putting somebody in the boards, or you're going to separate locker rooms after the game. You all sit down. You talk to each other back and forth through the game. It's a very social thing after the game. After the game, it doesn't matter where you lost, it doesn't matter where you won. You all sit down and have a direct, it might be a Pepsi, it might be a beer, whatever. Anyway, along the shore of it is, a motion has been proposed. We don't have the time to work it out yet. Theresa, would you like to have a little more to say?
Perhaps then if we consider voting on the motion for it to also include to put it at no risk of our application deadline.
Words for me?
Are you okay with that?
I'm good with that.
Okay. So I think it's just the wording. I'd like to know what the wording was when we considered the second, the second pad? Because we didn't promise the second pad. We said we'd look into the infrastructure for a second pad. I think this is a similar, similar way. We're looking to the infrastructure for curling, not building a curling rink, but looking into it. And that doesn't affect this application, yet we are directing staff to look into it.
I agree with what you're going there, but we actually did do something about the infrastructure. We agreed to increase the size of the piping and cover that if it was ever built and they moved it. So we actually did something, so we may not do anything here.
They can check to see if the engineering, those infrastructure can support a curling. So if we can kind of word that into the motion, that'd be a favor.
It's getting more complicated all the time. Are you getting any closer to?
I'm trying. I'm trying to figure out where that might fit in best. Direct staff to consult with engineers regarding the feasibility of increasing the infrastructure of, am I taking out the phase two part? Or are we taking? Okay, increasing the infrastructure of the proposed arena in the second phase of the project and report back to council at no risk of our application deadline?
Read that again, please.
Okay. The council direct staff to consult with the engineers regarding the feasibility of increasing the infrastructure to add a curling rink to the proposed arena in the second phase of the project and report back to council at no risk to our application deadline.
Does that give you a clear enough direction after what would you do with that?
So if I have to read that correctly, then I'll reject it to the engineers, similar to looking at how you would add a second pad and take a look at the current plans to see that nothing that we're doing in the current plans would preclude us from adding a curling rink at a later date. So really that is the intention, is my understanding. And then making those infrastructural balances to ensure that we wouldn't have to upgrade the electricity or the natural gas, stormwater, those types of things in the future if we were to create with a curling.
But you did say at a later date.
So, yeah, where it is, so while at the same time, I'm going to have the discussion with them is, you know, how do we announce that later, what are the benefits of each? And then come back here and have discussion with them as well.
Very well. Does that work for everybody, Mayor Todd?
I still don't totally understand. I just, I need to ask you to read that again. But I'm fine with it, with Gori explained it well. Like, I'm fine with looking at the infrastructure to make sure we're not going to preclude the building of curling rink. But like, I'll be very, again, very vulnerable this, there is no way we can get the building design, get it costed out, get it laid out, so we can apply for funding for this right now. That's just not possible. It's also adding millions to the scope of the project right now and changing everything dramatically for how we budget, how we raise money and everything else. Can we do it later on? Absolutely. But I think the dialogue starts now, it doesn't end now. So could I ask, just to hear that again, please?
Yeah, if I understood what Matthew said. The council direct staff to consult with the engineers regarding the feasibility to increase the infrastructure, to add a curling rink to the proposed arena in the second phase of the project and report back to council at no risk to the application deadline.
I'm all right with that, except for the fact that I would like that changed to either the first or the second phase of the project. Because if the engineers say to us, well, yeah, all you gotta do is this, and it's very simple, then it might be worth going for if there's time to go for it. If there's not, and they will know that, I suspect, very quickly, then it is already stated in the motion that we're looking at phase two, which may never happen, let's face it. Or, who knows, another series of grants may come along in five years' time, governments change. There's no guarantee that we are going to get to any financing this time. So we may be looking at the same idea two years down the road, in which case we've already explored the possibility. And we can take it further in the next two years before the thing comes up again. So I'd like to read in either the first or the second. Because if the minute possibility exists of adding it in the first, which Mayor Todd has seen think it does, and quite frankly, I suspect we all doubt. If it's there, would you mind showing?
I just don't want to muddy the waters with the application. The most important thing we can do right now is all stand forward together, united, which is why I'm actually a little uncomfortable with having this discussion, quite frankly, since we've got a very, very strong application going forward. If we don't get that money now, the last time there was any recreation dollars available like this was Calrith in 2008, 2009. If we've got to kick this down the road 10 years, who knows? And if we don't get this money right now, whether you call it phase one, call it whatever you want, if we don't get the money now, there's no curling rink addition later on, there's no nothing. So I think we need to be united on what we're doing now. So I'm in favor of looking at making sure, because I think that probably is a relatively quick discussion. But being able to just put a curling complex into phase one, it just, and I know the engineers are going to come back with that. It took, if I could ask, how many months did it take to finalize, to get to the point where, because we had the basic design done last winter roughly, but then it was, what, April, May, so it was five, six months before we got the full engineering done? So we're not talking about something that could be done in a couple of weeks. You have a comment on that?
No, so I think going back, you know, having the conversation with the engineers, still be able to highlight quickly the nuances of adding curling rink and then certainly have to bring that back to council.
Yes.
My intention of making a motion was to completely start a relationship, a better relationship, start the dialogue, as you say, and invite hope for a curling club to stay in first place and to potentially force a phase two with or without a twin pad and make the phase two to be perhaps maybe just primary. I just, my intention was just to not focus that option. But it was never to have it in the first phase, because it would risk the first phase.
So you, and so Mayor Todd?
Well, and we can't speak for the community either, the community plan is, is, the fundraiser is based on what we've been having for quite some time, right? And your right says maybe, but I'm the one who made the motion. So I'm just sharing with you my intention of that.
Okay, well then, perhaps we should read your motion again and see whether it is to your intention and finally go along.
Sure.
We have it one more time, please.
Yes, I'm going to read without the original. Okay. The council direct staff to consult with the engineers regarding the feasibility to increase the infrastructure, to add a curling rink to the proposed arena in the second phase of the project and report back to council at no risk to the application deadline.
I just think at this stage, at this, kick it again. That's, that's the best motion you're going to get. I can support a phase one for that, I can support a phase two.
Michael?
Well, I think the curling club deserves an answer of some kind. And I'm with Dory on the fact, this sounds as logical as we've been come up with at this point. The whole scheduling and operation or planning of this changes and tweaks slightly here and there as we go along. And I think really, I think what the curling club wants is an answer. Are we in a this phase or is it going to be somewhere down the road? I'm just really, we're trying to deal with them.
Well, the unfortunate thing is, this whole thing should have been down the road because with the recreational master plan, it was supposed to be a multi-year discussion, which we could plan on putting these various things into a facility. And it didn't have, because of my plan for shit all at once. Councilperson, you're the only one that hasn't weighed in on this, that I know you were a curler, possibly will be again, I don't know.
Yes, picked up an application here.
I don't think to say.
Yes, I do, actually. I'm a big supporter of the curling club and my husband and I curled there for a few years. I'm also a big supporter of building our new arena. And I don't want to jeopardize that. I would be supportive to look at phase two, if it's at all possible, down the road. But at this particular time, if the motion states as it is now, I will support it. But for phase one, I would not support that at this time. So definitely phase two down the road, so it does not jeopardize us even building a recreational facility in our town, so. Thank you.
Okay, well, it seems fairly clear going around the table what the feeling is. Does anybody want the motion read again? I don't think that makes a slight difference. Okay, go ahead. All in favor? Gary, in that direction? Thank all for coming. You're welcome to stay if you'd like some titillating entertainment for the rest of the evening.
Mr. Chair, just one real quick last comment. We don't need to include a staff direction, but if there's any way, I do believe that this will support our application, yet the possibility of expanding it. So if we could ask for staff to possibly seek support, make a support letter, something similar to what you read tonight, Gary, so we can actually get that to the province as well. Because I think it does make our application now even stronger to show the potential for community, this to become a community recreational hub for all sorts of uses. So I would, if everyone came to the council, would just ask Mr. Armstrong to have that discussion with Gary and whoever else. Michael, where are you?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I do, good luck.
Okay, Murray? Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.
Okay, going very long. I asked for a server student, staff report 71, 2019 budget process. The recommendation is that we permit the whole direct staff to proceed with the 2020 budget process and changes to the meeting schedules as outlined in this report. And I just have to report 71, 2019. Can I have a mover and a secretary for that motion, please? That's the burden, that's the Janzner. Councilor Young is the portfolio chair, Eric is not here, so I can have Matthew, I believe, speak directly to that motion.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. So as a follow-up from the September 16th, 2019 meeting, I was asked to come back with some more specific dates as well as a definition, a little bit more of how we're going to track the 2020 budget. So we're going to start with the operating budget timelines. And with that, what we're going to suggest is adding two extra meetings, one in November, one in December, for community of the whole. And so that we can dedicate those two meetings specifically to the operating budget. So on November 12th, that would be the additional on the one in November, we review health services, social services, administration, protective services, planning development at that special community of the whole. Then on December 9th, we would be focused again as an additional community of the whole meeting. And we would be focused on transportation, parks, recreation, the environment, all the serious projects at the community of the whole meeting. So what we're trying to do is really focus on just being able to clear the deck of all other issues and not have to use a regular scheduled meeting to be able to focus directly on those. From there, the December 16th meeting would change from community of the whole to a council meeting, simply because we are, if council wishes to not have a meeting on December 23rd, which would be the regular scheduled council meeting. Following that, January 13th, we would have a review of the revenue fees and property taxes here at the video, right before the special committee of the whole meeting. And then again, be able to dedicate that entire meeting just to focusing on that side of the operating budget. That leads us to January 20th, where we can bring it all together back and take a look at the operating budget, see where we are and see if there's any further adjustments that we need to make. So that's the operating side. Next, we'll move to the capital and operational side. This side of the budget, we're suggesting that we can do in the course of the community of the whole meetings, just because of the terms we left on us. And just broken it down in a way that it provides short amounts of exposure to the budget without having to get overly into it and use the entire meeting's worth of time. So with this one starting this evening, you're going to review the initial list of capital and operational projects as part of my original outline. Took me a couple of weeks in October and putting those operational and capital projects on a survey monkey for the public to be able to comment on, provide a little bit of prioritization and feedback, as well as any other additional ideas. Then coming back November 4th, the regular scheduled community of the whole meeting, we would start to take a look at the public feedback as well as start our prioritization. And that coming in from staff, council, as well as the public feedback. December 2nd, again, a regular scheduled community of the whole meeting, where we'd have a chance to review, prioritize capital operations. So, so as you can see, each meeting is a building on the previous meetings, so that we have a number of times. And then finally, January 20th, we recognize that date because we're already back in the operating budget for a review at that point, to be able to take a look at it and say, how does that match up with the overall? The other ability is to making sure that we take a strategic plan and have some time for that, be able to marry the capital and operating project to the strategic plan and so that those two make sense as we move forward. So really, that's my report. There are no financial implications to this. I tried to really provide an opportunity to space out the conversation and put it into bite-sized chunks so that it's something, but it does give us a number of views to discuss the budget overall. So I think.
Thank you, Matthew. The other question I have for you is there are some figures that we don't usually have this time of year, like our United Counties, is there any government figures that we get that we wouldn't have been? How would you accommodate them?
So as in previous years, when we attempt to work through the budget, I take, in consultation with those different organizations, they're able to usually provide an estimate or a guideline of where they see their project going for next year. Once we receive those official numbers, then we come back and make those adjustments. So that's why it's constantly evolving type of document. And therefore, anytime that if we already reviewed something, then we'll bring the updated information once we use it.
We had some surprises with the change in government. Ontario this spring with additional We had some surprises with the change in government Ontario this spring, with additional costs as they wax in budgets of the United Counties, but then they flip flopped on it, so it wasn't as bad a hit as we thought it was going to be. Of course, we don't really know what they're going to do this year, so there's always the possibility that something may happen there out of the blue again, but I guess we just have to address that when it happens.
So one thing that the message is able, when we got together in August, that the government was very cognizant of the fact that making those in-year adjustments was very difficult. So they're trying to make sure that we understand what each of those possible adjustments might be prior to actually getting into 2020. So we're very appreciative of the fact that they listened to our concern, and certainly we'll be going through the budget process to make sure that as we receive information, that it's correlated back into the budget component.
Thank you, Matthew. Any questions for? Here, Tom?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a quick comment. We're actually looking at the projected 2020 budget, Joint Services, I was thinking for, so we should have some rough idea of where we'll be, barring any dramatic unforeseen changes. I think that those projections would be pretty accurate this year. The big change last year, I think it's been worked into the system, so we all know where we're at, is the animals service called an enhancement, but it's really just keeping up with the need. If I could, the only question I have about adding the meetings, no real issue with adding the meetings, but both, like, on the two added meetings, we're looking at items that are generally pretty baked, like, and ready to go. I don't really foresee a huge amount of discussion on the 12th and the 9th. Not that I'm saying we'll run the committee meetings, but these will probably, unless, again, through you, unless the CIO has something dramatic that is gonna happen at these meetings, these are generally very quick. So adding meetings, I'm just not quite seeing the need for it with these two subjects. If we had to add a meeting, it'd be more capital, because that seems to be, I guess, a real discussion of major expenses. These are all just operational, like staffing, and I'm just not sure there's that much that's gonna require a huge, but maybe I'm wrong, so I'll just leave it up for Mr. Armstrong if he has any comment.
So I was just taking the feedback. I thought I heard from council that they'd like more time to be able to focus on the budget in particular, making sure that they fully understand it, are able to ask any questions, and that we're able to respond to those in the time limit. So I'm happy to change it up, but was just trying to respond to that request.
Councilor Janzner, you have your hand up.
You mentioned here, Mr. Armstrong, that it did something, finding to be a force like to the strategic plan. Are we still thinking of, do we have any kind of a whole date for it?
Yep, so I should be back to the next day to hold it, but I'm just waiting for the two courts to come back, but certainly my aim is to act that well and underway throughout November, December, so that we also can align to this process as well.
Please, thank you.
Barry? That's a good one.
We did talk about having special meetings just for the budget process, for everybody to have a better understanding, so we're only concentrating on the budget. So I definitely like this layer that you have proposed, and looking forward to getting it done.
Okay. Any other comments? If not, the recommendation is that committee of the whole direct staff to proceed with the 2020 budget process and changes to the meeting schedules as outlined, in other words, what he has proposed in this report. All in favor? Both? Carry. Next, we have Stafford Court, 72/2019, the 2020 capital and operational budget suggestions, which I think we already looked at, but committee of the staff to proceed with obtaining public feedback, which is likely to be new for us, on the 2020 capital and operational project suggestions by way of electronic survey and report back to committee of the whole on November 4th, 2019. Can I have a mover and a second for that motion, please? Councilor Armstrong here. Councilor Janzner. Matthew, would you like to speak to that as well?
Certainly, thank you very much. So we have elicited thoughts and ideas, I have from staff, as well as council, as well as taking all of the previous years' ideas that didn't get approved, and being able to accumulate this list. So there's two lists before you that you see this evening. One is the capital project suggestions. It's simply alphabetical order. The capital projects are items that are over $10,000 per item. When you take a look at the second list, you're looking at operational projects, and those are items that are less than $10,000 each, or non-tangential in nature. And when I mention non-tangential, I mean reports, things like that. So when you kind of take a look going through it, you can see that there's lots of items on it. We have not provided dollar values at this point, some of them are hard to identify exactly at $12,000 per item, but certainly we're wanting to be able to also elicit some public feedback as to some of the priorities that they, that the public sees for the town, as well as being able to add additional items for council's consideration. So this is what you're seeing here, is kind of broken down into those two lists, and then moving forward, we may do a public feedback using survey monkey, and just being able to see what that generates in terms of priorities as well as ideas.
So we have two things here. We have the two lists, and then the crux of the thing is the public opinion on those two discussions. Councilor Shankar?
Matthew, for the public survey, are we listing all of these things?
That was the intention. We could group them together in terms of pathway, or parting lots of pathways and things like that. We will ask the question a number of ways in order to elicit feedback in terms of creating, we did this about two years ago, and in that, it talked about creating funds for replacing facilities, things like that, but then it also got fairly specific in terms of the ideas that people would like. So the idea here is that each person, when they go to the fill-up of the survey, they might be given 20 kind of points, or 20 items that they could pick as priorities for them, and we might actually get them to rank them in terms of that order, but we wouldn't allow them to pick the entire list as a priority item. So we take that information, we bring it back, and then it gives an opportunity that goes to have the highest number of, to the highest priority, ten to twelve to the top.
So my only problem with that is, you're gonna get very subjective responses, and I mean, like, for example, in the capital project suggestion, number one should be the water tower, right? We need a water tower. And then, you know, some of these other items that are on there are like a Sears Christmas Wish List list, you know? Like, if you get 20 people that check off all of those, and only 10 pick the water tower, I mean, our responsibility is to the town and infrastructure, and we need to build a new water tower, regardless of what, I shouldn't say regardless, but I mean, that should be priority number one. So I don't know how we can, I know we've got it in alphabetical order, but if you can almost separate it into, you know, this first 10 items are infrastructure, the next 10 items are, you know, I don't wanna call it a Christmas wish list, but, you know, they might like to see, but somehow where they're picking from each group, so they're not just all picking Christmas wish lists.
So one of the questions that we answered in the past is, what do you, when you are having, replacement of core infrastructure or addition of new items? So that tends to allow council to get some feedback, and there's a kind of expected response that you can get from that. I'm more than happy to put this into listings and break it down a little bit, to say, these are things that are kind of health and safety-related, core infrastructure. These are items that are basically replacing or upgrading what we currently have, and these are items that are completely brand-new. And so if you wanna break it down that way, then it allows us to get some feedback on that. The advantage of doing that is that still you limit them to a certain number of points per each of those lists, and so that way you elicit feedback as well.
Ed, can I? I did, when you were sending some information, you said, you know, if you have $10,000, would you like to, is that from previous?
Yes, absolutely.
So I like that idea in that, if you also, you gotta have some sort of dollar value next to these, because I don't think the average person knows a front-end loader costs $250,000, right? So just, I really do think you need to have dollar values, so that people aren't checking off $30,000 worth of stuff, if you don't know you don't have.
Thank you, Councilor Shankar. The other thing to remember here is that we are requesting public input. The buck does stop here. It doesn't matter whether 100 people vote for solar lighting, heritage trail, if we know that we don't have the money to do that, that isn't gonna happen. So, and if you're calling on the water tower, you're right, that has to be a priority, but it's an ongoing thing, they're already involved, and if we're already doing it, we're making plans towards it, and it's willing to be done, regardless of whether one person votes for it, or 50 people vote for it. And some of these things, the sidewalk flower replacement, or snowplow replacement, that's something that we hit on a revolving basis, we talk about it through the week, or through the year, rather. I think the focus, at least what I got from here, is these other things that we kind of allude to, or get mentioned once in a while, or when we're walking around town, we notice, or the staff has mentioned that Jesus would be really handy. I think that's what these things are generally geared toward, but to me, when I read through these things today, there are a number of things that are really gonna be taken out and sticked out, so it doesn't really matter whether, as I said, 10 people or 100 people vote for it, it's gonna get done, and we have to get done this year, but it's gonna get done. E Street is gonna get done. Our park itself, contained breathing apparatus gear replacement, that has to get done. There's just certain things that have to get done, and that's what we like to do, to make sure that they get done. But these are, to me, these two lists here are kind of the other things with the money that we find are southwester, that we like to put as good use to as possible. Anyway, that's my opinion on this. Councilor Burton?
I wanted to echo what Councilor Shankar was saying. You definitely need to have some dollar value on there, because, I mean, the average person wouldn't necessarily know that the front-end loader was $250,000, and that's important to know, that kind of information. You know, the boat ramp facility, the additional, you know, that's gonna be $10,000, and those dollar figures will add up. So, and they have to understand that, you know, the wish list is the wish list, but the must list, you know, these are the musts that the town of Prescott will have to have, so. Thank you.
Very good. So Janzner?
Just to put, perhaps, I agree, public meeting is an awesome thing, but it is really the last time we did this, just to put your mind at ease. It gives us a sense of what the flavor is out there and what the desires are, but it doesn't represent a very, very small percentage of people who respond, and it isn't used as any kind of weight, you know, deciding factor. It just informs us of what we should consider as possibilities. It helps us in that sense.
Great, Tom. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think there's some easy ways to deal with this. You can take probably about half these items out, because quite frankly, they shouldn't really go back to the public for, like, the water tower. Like, that's not gonna ever come up for referendum, we have to do it. And things like, I mean, there's a number of things here, like replacing the one-truck, the fire department's self-contained breathing apparatus gear. These are all, I mean, they're necessities. These should not be, I don't think these are the things that you include on a survey like that. My suggestion would be is to break it down to a couple of basic categories, recreation culture, maybe there's another, maybe road repairs or whatever, but I don't think we're asking about, do you wanna repair sidewalks? If you wanna repair sidewalks, maybe the question asked would be, do you wanna put more money into it and so on? The one caution I have in terms of dollar value, there's a pile of items under, we don't have a figure for, and you'd have to do basic engineering or go up to tender to get some sort of rough idea, and I think that could be challenging. I'm not saying you can't do it somewhere, but I mean, if you put, say, okay, White House renovation, what dollar figure you put on there? What does renovation mean? It means something different to me than it probably does everybody around the table, and probably everybody at home, so I don't know how we can attach a dollar figure to it. So I would just, a lot of the essentials I would suggest removing, like the water tower, and some of the others, though, I think we've just, we could have staff bring back an altered list at the next meeting, and then we can, you know, based on the feedback presented tonight, which is all great, and then we can, you know, decide on a list moving forward, because we've gotta get people a more, a better way to put responses, because there's, what, 50 or so items here, I would guess, maybe more? So I think we've gotta try to trim it down, and like I said, I think it's fairly, it's fairly easy to go through and take off some of the big ones that, you know, like I said, the water tower is not one we're gonna go out and ask people about doing. So that would be my suggestion moving forward, and just trying a few of these things down so they're maybe not as specific either. I mean, some of the records, you get out of recreation, you could have something about, you know, ball field rejuvenation, it could be more general. There's other things that could be just tweaked a bit.
Michael, would you like to weigh in on it?
Well, it's a fairly extensive list for sure, but I'm agreeing with the other comments around, there's some musts here, and there's some maybes type thing. So I think we'd have to sort and shuffle here to get the real ones. I see cool replacements here, I don't know how much of conversations come up with it, but anyway, there's just things here that it's gonna be maybe interesting to get feedback on, but in the real world, we have to make the decisions here as to what's going to be needed, what's can be patched up, or what can be put on the computer or something, so we have to kind of look at them.
Okay, thank you, Councilor. What I'm hearing here is that the motion, nobody has any problem with the motion, the motion is reading that committee of the whole direct staff to proceed with obtaining public feedback, the 2020 capital and operational project suggestions by way of electronic survey and report that back to committee of the whole November 4th. What we're having problems with is the actual list of items that we're asking people to comment on. I think that's pretty much what we're hearing. So I have a suggestion. We all have this list now. One day at home, take a look at it, stroke off what we each think, doesn't need to be on there, and we use the water towers, one example, we've used the breathing apparatus gear as another one. The bunker gear is replaced on a regular basis anyway. I think there are definite things that can be taken off both lists, and that Matthew take that into consideration, or perhaps bring a revised list back to us, or if he's really wanting to get this thing out there, email a revised list to us, and that revised list goes out to the public. I think that is the consensus around. Um, I have, I, I think that is the consensus of the way around. Mayor Tom?
Yeah, I, I would agree, and I would just suggest I would make an amendment to the motion to just add in by way of bringing a revised list back to council and then proceeding with an electronic survey, and I just think we have to change, probably want to move the date up, see if the revised list comes back in two weeks, and then everything else flows from there, November fourth. And that gives us time to get our feedback in directly, based on the feedback in term.
So, Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. So next council meeting is the twenty first, I'm sorry, next committee meeting is the twenty first.
That doesn't give us much time.
That, that will definitely hinder the November fourth discussion.
Which is why I suggested that we did it electronically, that we pass this motion this evening, uh, but we alter the motion as mayor Tom is the desk, and may not pose particularly the worst, but alter it to reflect the fact that it's gonna be a revised survey that way it can be out immediately. Um, assuming that's possible, or, or?
Okay, absolutely. I was also wanting to suggest if three people would like to form a working group and have more of them this week, uh, distill the list down to a, a reasonable, um, kind of understanding of what we'd like to put in, and then we can issue a summary next week. That still allows us to achieve our objective.
Well, I'd be happy to fill in and add with anybody else feel that that would be a reasonable solution, Mayor Tom?
Actually, I, I, I don't know why we'd need a subcommittee to meet on this one. We're just talking about whittling down some items, and I don't understand why it would take a great deal of time just to review some of this, divide it up into categories and bring back a few suggestions for us to review. I, I, it just seems like, like we're overly complicating it.
Are you suggesting we do it now?
Absolutely not. Uh, but I think the suggestion, I think all the feedback's good, I think we've given enough feedback to staff to be able to bring back the revised list for that next meeting, which is two weeks away. All you're doing is just, is moving some things around, and if you think that could go up to listeners in advance by, by an email, the list is here, it's just, it's just gotta, you know, it's just a question of moving some items around. I just don't, it, it just seems like we're overly complicating it by adding like a working group to actually meetings.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, but my, my only comment is that if we want to, depending on how many days you'd like to put this out, uh, for public comment, waiting till the twenty first, then it becomes problematic. The best we can do about it would be several days.
We're not gonna pass it public by the end of the year anyways, what's, you know, could be realistic on that. I don't think it's gonna kill anything, it'd take an extra week to...
But we already passed the timeline that we're going to be presenting the things on, so since this is, um, something that we're actually wanting to look at, consider and discuss, then I think we should give the public a reasonable kick if it can, so to speak. Uh, and putting this out in the public is as possible would allow them to do that, and then, of course, allow staff to, to have a look at that as well.
But the first meeting for that is November fourth, and we're just reviewing the public feedback. I, I, maybe you'd have to move that back to the next meeting, and I, I don't, I just, it seems like we're overly complicating, that's whatever early decides is going to be.
Okay, any other suggestions, comments?
I actually did put the amended, amended motion out there, so.
Do you have amended motion on the table?
Yeah, and, uh, three, Mr. Chair? That Committee of the whole directs staff to proceed with obtaining public feedback on a revised twenty twenty capital and operational, uh, project suggestions by way of electronic feedback and report back to Committee of the whole. Um, I, I'm not quite sure what that date would be, November fourth, or is that?
Actually, if I may, by way of bringing a revised, uh, list back to council, and then I was gonna suggest what would date we would look at, what would be feasible, and then the rest of the motion would read as, as is. But if that's not doable, we need an extra week.
Well, I don't like that because of the timelines. I would like to say close as soon as possible. First, I don't see a reason why we can't pass a revised motion tonight and then just check this thing off by email, um, each one of us in about ten minutes at home, and either say okay or no, okay, one of the two.
We actually can't do that.
Why?
That's an electronic meeting.
Not for doing it in demand, I, when I'm doing it as a group, it's not a group meeting, I'm looking at something that you're giving... Matthew was emailing to me and saying, yeah, I have a few problems with it.
I'm not gonna argue the point, but I won't participate in something like that because you're, you're giving staff direction over email, and I don't think, I don't think we should do that either, because I think we should be transparent. And I thought we were all on the same page with this, and now I just went wrong.
Okay, well, maybe what we should do is, yes, first motion on the table, it has been first and seconded, and what would you vote on? See what happens?
I propose an amendment, I'm asking for a second, or it's, I think it sums up. If I don't get a second, that's fine, but I think if everyone's talking about a revised list, my motion includes the revised list. Then we just have to discuss the needs.
Would you read his revised motion again as soon as he is satisfied with it, please?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Um, correct me if I'm wrong, okay. Uh, that Committee of the whole directs staff to proceed with obtaining public feedback by way of bringing a revised list.
Obtaining public feedback on the twenty twenty capital operational project suggestions by way of bringing a revised list back to council on, that's why I left it open with the date, and then proceeding with an electronic survey and then reporting back to Committee of the whole on whether it's November fourth or it's the following meeting. I thought that actually just captured what we were discussing, I, I believe.
I think, I think the problem, may I?
No.
I think the problem, I see what you're getting at, is we just passed the revised, not revised, we just passed the, the timeline, and we're already moving away from it. That, that's the part that bugs me, the amended motion. Could we, could we consider it, would it be legal if we just, uh, just had direction to submit as per timeline a revised list that categorizes the, what, the non-mandatory items? In, in that Matthews is dead.
Okay, maybe we can do that. However, Mayor Tom has proposed a revised motion, and if I have my regmaral correct here, if we, you actually have it, you can read it now, I'm listening.
I, I don't think I'm very correct.
Okay, do you have, are you ready, Mayor Tom?
Yeah, the Committee of the whole directs staff to proceed with obtaining public feedback on twenty twenty capital operational project suggestions by way of bringing a revised list back to council on, what's our next committee meeting? The twenty second?
Twenty first.
On October twenty first, uh, and then proceeding with the electronic survey and reporting back to Committee of the whole on November fourth, two thousand nineteen. If we actually review this on the twenty first and then get it out right away, we've still got roughly two weeks, do we not? Say we get it out on the twenty second?
Is there a second for that motion on the table?
Sounds okay.
You're willing to se- separate it? Second, you're willing to second it, the word second, thank you very much, okay? Um, all favor. Those opposed? Motion's defeated. All right. Did you have a suggestion from the whole, or did you?
My, my, I just, what was the point of approving that timeline if we weren't gonna follow the timeline? So unperformed.
I'm saying, really, why don't we vote on that?
So my proposal would be suggesting that give staff direction to revise the list of non-mandatory items for public meeting. As per, as per the schedule that is on, on.
So in other words, you're putting the news on staff?
Yeah.
To take over, they consider the normal things that we're gonna do anyway?
Yeah.
And so...
Yes.
Sorry, you can switch it.
Yes.
So we even moved on a second for the first original motion.
Okay. Oh, yes, you're right. Okay. So before we call that vote, I would ask, uh...
By all means.
Matthew, do you have enough suggestions from the table to change the list that's going to the public?
I believe I do. I will also list a few, Matthew, I require.
Matthew, I'm good with this.
First motion.
First motion.
As written.
As long as he's gonna change it. Maybe I will read the first motion again. The Committee of the whole directs staff to proceed with obtaining public feedback on the twenty twenty capital and operational project suggestions by way of electronic survey and report back to Committee of the whole on November fourth, two thousand nineteen. It does not specify where it went, this list. It says suggestions, and, um, Counselor Janisman has suggested that Matthew is capable, uh, of whittling that list down. You seem to be all right with him able to whittle it down. He's indicated that he can whittle it down. Anybody else? Okay, so we have a motion on the table. Does anybody wanna pick it up? Seriously, hey? All right, all favor. Carrie. What the fuck do you think? All right. Uh...
Our name?
Making life a bit...
Operations, Counselor Tori Shankar. We have staff report seventy-three, twenty nineteen. And this is a community center net operating cost sharing. The recommendation is that the Committee of the whole endorse the concept of the sharing of net operating costs to South Grandville community centers and bring forward this proposal to the township of Augusta and the township of Edwardsburg Cardinal Municipal Councils. Counselor Shankar, I'm sure you have something to say against. Um, we just received this tonight, so I'm gonna let Matthew guide us through it. Matthew, has this already been presented to the Augusta township?
Yeah, actually, um, I need a little and a second for that motion before we can discuss it. Apologies, I, Counselor, I, Counselor Mayor Tom, um, who else? Counselor Shankar, thank you. Now, here, well, we go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you.
So what you have before you this evening is kind of the culmination of a number of most of discussions and, and work, and even before we started sitting down and discussing the organization and how we can work together, there's been a number of conversations over the last several years as to how we can participate as a group of three municipalities in supporting, uh, overall the, the activities and costs of the residents of all three municipalities. So as you can see here, we're, we're moving towards an application for the, uh, infrastructure program, community culture and recreation, uh, for the replacement of the Leovoyden community center. Uh, in what, the impetus of those discussions, I started with the municipal organization fund, and the first meeting where we had a formal sit-down discussion between the leadership of both council members and staff members was made thirteenth of two thousand nineteen. Uh, as part of that meeting, the concept of net cost sharing was presented, explained, discussed briefly, and then since then, there's been a number of conversations at various levels of leadership to be able to further refine that. So, uh, in this, the concept of net cost sharing isn't unique to South Grandville or the Town of Prescott, and actually is beneficial to, um, Edwardsburg Cardinal as well as Prescott, and then having Augusta be inclusive of this model to be able to support residents and where they access services from. So for many years, uh, both Prescott and Edwardsburg Cardinal have run three, run more than three community centers to support the South Grandville, um, residents in their activities at, at those facilities, and those were done relatively efficiently. Uh, so when you take a look at, uh, what happened in the fall of two thousand eighteen, which was, uh, unfortunately, the decommissioning of our ice plant at the Edwardsburg Community Center, it's, uh, it really put additional pressure on some of our neighbors to be able to support, uh, those users. What we found, and it's borne out through the, um, information provided here, is that Brockville didn't have any additional, uh, really increase in revenue, uh, from, from twenty seventeen to twenty eighteen as a result of our, uh, closing our facility, and then Edwardsburg Cardinal, that our closest neighbors certainly didn't see that, and if anything, they saw a small decrease of about twenty seven hundred dollars in, in total revenue between twenty seventeen and twenty twenty-two. So when we're talking about, um, adding a third facility back into the, uh, mix of, of the overall, it wouldn't suggest that it's gonna have negative effect on the other facilities in South Grandville, but simply because people are focused on prime time hours. And what we consider prime time hours in, in facility rentals is those evening hours during the week, as well as the, most of the time during the day on Saturday and Sunday and evening on Saturday and Sunday, to be able to, uh, that's when people are, aren't working, that's when kids are available, that's when, uh, people are able to get together mostly, um, then that's why they're called prime time hours. And so you're, that's born out of the, um, observations that we at Brockville or Edwardsburg Cardinal, uh, were able to generate additional revenue because the, the prime time hours will already be used. So adding another, and adding back the, uh, facility, uh, the replacement of the Leovoyden shouldn't have a negative impact on those, uh, other facilities and really bring back what we've been used to see and from a historical perspective in South Grandville. So the other part of, uh, this plan is, is really focused on the net costs. And so you take all of your revenues, subtract all of your expenses, and inevitably, when it comes to community centers, you will have a deficit, and so, or a net cost. And so what we're talking about here is really splitting up the costs between Augusta, Edwardsburg Cardinal and Prescott for being able to attribute, um, those costs to those municipalities and therefore sharing in those costs. And so when you take a look at the population, Prescott's about twenty-two point six percent, Edwardsburg Cardinal's about thirty-eight percent, and then Augusta is about thirty-nine point four percent, uh, give or take some, some, uh, decimal points. So if you were to take a look at Edwardsburg Cardinal, and currently, uh, we don't have a community center that's operating as a community center, so that's, we take that to the equation, if you assume that they run a hundred and twenty thousand dollar, uh, net operating cost, which would be, um, what they ran in two thousand eighteen, then you would split that up between the various municipalities based on population. So in terms of, uh, if you were to go forward, it started January first of two thousand twenty, then Prescott would send a payment, uh, after reconciliation of approximately twenty-seven thousand dollars to Edwardsburg Cardinal in support of the residents that use the Spencer Cardinal arenas. Augusta would, uh, then send payment for approximately forty-seven thousand dollars, again, to support the, um, the residents that, that use those arenas. And finally, Edwardsburg Cardinal would go from supporting their arenas, their residents supporting the arena's net operating, uh, cost of a hundred and twenty thousand, and it would reduce to forty-five thousand. So it's basically a net benefit to Edwardsburg Cardinal of approximately seventy-seven thousand dollars. So going through there, um, again, we had a number of conversations as we discussed these various items. Um, we further reforming to make the, the allocation model. Originally, it was going to be based on, um, the actual users of each arena. Um, that, uh, when you try to do the tracking, it's gonna be very difficult, uh, based on the people inside the, the net operating component of time, so, uh, as a group, we, we started to talk about population, which fairly closely matches, uh, the usage, uh, in our fleet. So, uh, sorry, uh, in, uh, so from two thousand twenty onwards, it would be approximately a seventy-four thousand dollar benefit to Edwardsburg Cardinal on a yearly basis, and then, once we bring on, um, the replacement of the Leovoyden, then it's... And then, once we bring on the replacement of the Leo Boyden, then expected total net operating cost would be over $200,000. Now, that's not 200,000 in addition to the 120, that's 200,000 in total. And so therefore, you see the allocations out there, approximately 45,000 for Prescott, 76,000 for Edwardsburg Cardinal, and approximately 79,000 for Augusta. So the above reflects the net added cost to any of their facility, approximately $8,000, and the proportionality of what that would look like. So to move forward with this, with this concept, what we'd like to do is ensure that the town of Prescott and council members are understanding of the concept and supportive of it. And then we would move forward to making a formal presentation to township of Augusta as well as the township of Edwardsburg Cardinal.
Very good. Councilor Shankar, as head of that department, would you like to comment on that first before anybody else weigh in?
Sure. Thank you. So this is a well-written report, Matthew. It looks, maybe the numbers make sense to me. You know, this is one step towards, you know, sharing services amongst the three couns, not councils, but the three areas where they live. And if we can start with this, this will, this will help in many ways, will help our application process, and it will provide a facility for the long term. And it's good to all the taxpayers. Our taxpayers will show a significant decrease in the operation cost. That 80,000, is that similar to what the Leo used to run as a deficit?
We're estimating 80,000 based on size. It's very difficult to say how it would be similar to the Leo Boyden, because we're looking at doing installation, we're looking at a much more efficient plant, ice plant, things like that. So we wouldn't expect it would be in excess of what the Leo Boyden was, but at the same time, there is a size to talk here.
Thank you. So I'm in favor of this meeting.
Other discussion? Councilor Janisman.
I do, like this, and it's perhaps a start of things to come about nothing. Given the possibility, we all hope that we're going to get the funding, but if we don't get the funding, we are, if don't get it, it's starting to gain returns 2020. So god forbid we don't get the funding, we are committing to something that we haven't, we don't have to. Right from wrong, we should, I don't get wrong, but just like Augusta has, had, to this point, has gotten away with a lot of savings, right? So I just want that noted, that we're adding to something that's a risk involved. Would you agree?
Yes.
Okay. And I see the numbers are similar to Mayor Sayaw's article in the Prescott Journal. Is it, this is just net operating cost, right? So why is it, well, I suppose you can't answer that. He put in the capital cost in his, could it have only been to educate his residents of what the capital costs are, perhaps? Because it should be clear that it is just operating, right?
Correct. So absolutely, this motion is for operating only. That's been the tenor of the conversation since May, certainly as we've been reflecting this. And so I'm not going to speak to Mayor Sayaw's intentions, but certainly this is what we've been working towards as a concept.
So I guess I just wanted to make it clear to the residents of Edwardsburg Cardinal and Augusta that it is still the Prescott's residents that carry the burden of the capital.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Councilor Burden.
Thank you. I definitely am going to support this motion. I think it's a step in the right direction to create the partnerships that we need. We are a recreational community in South Grandville, so I definitely agree that this is, this is the step in the right direction. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I just want to thank the state for bringing this forward tonight. It is, as you've mentioned, this was the way we were looking at going back to the spring, even before that, as a report notes, we talked about trying to operational services going back quite some time with Augusta primarily, largely due to the fact they had no arena, we did have one. I really want to thank Augusta's Mayor Doug Malenka and CAO Ray Morrison for being so forthright with this and working with Mr. Armstrong on this and with myself as this was all put together. I think it's a great plan. At the end of the day, I mean, to sum it all up, Edwardsburg Cardinal's moved these savings here that's actually placing that in, so it addresses one of their concerns that was noted, of course, with Mayor Sayaw's Prescott Journal piece last week. They want to get their cost down, this accomplishes that. Augusta seems willing to come on board, depending on the final number. Augusta seems very willing to come on board as a supporter of recreation in the area based on what their residents use. And of course, here in Prescott, we're absorbing the capital expense, and we're also paying our share of the building operations, split between the three arenas as well. So it makes perfect sense for the entire region, because when it comes to recreation in particular, nobody pays any attention to the invisible lines. You've got people from all municipalities crossing borders. And it's also, this is not reinventing the wheel. Gannett-Okwin, Ways and the Thousand Islands have a very similar agreement where TLTI pays a significant portion of other Gann arena costs because of their usage. So this, this really makes a great deal of sense. It does move the capital out of this as well, so there's no confusion about who owns the facilities and how we move forward there. So just based on operations, which is very easily defensible, because the operational costs, of course, brought about by the users, which come from all of you in this, so it's a great, it's a great proposal, fully, fully on board, we're supporting it, of course. I will note that if we do support this tonight, we'll be going to Augusta very soon for their approval, and I believe we've already, have we formally booked the presentation at Edwardsburg Cardinal?
Made that request, yes.
So we're looking, coming up very, very shortly after that, to talk to Edwardsburg Cardinal. All is being done in anticipation of bringing a full application to the Minister of Infrastructure right around the end of this month. We have asked for that meeting, and we're just looking at, I think, about the Thursday now of that last week. So all moving forward well now, and I think this is kind of, kind of one of the last pieces we need to put together here to really provide an incredibly solid application with multiple municipalities going forward. So again, full, full support tonight. And again, I really want to thank Augusta for being willing to come forward with this, because it is, it addresses some issues that have been longstanding with recreational sharing costs in the area, but they're the ones coming forward and really looking at this. It's very, very progressive on their part. And at the end of the day, we could go on a $12 million world-class new recreational facility, the Edwardsburg Cardinal, Prescott and Augusta. So I think it's, it's great news overall here. Thank you.
Anybody else? Councilor Ostrander.
Well, I think it's, it's sort of a no-brainer that we put this funding document we have in front of us forward to the other municipalities. It obviously checks all the boxes, like you should say, as far as what we need, what they need, and what we, the three of us need collectively. I had to read it a couple of times, because I had read Mayor Sayaw's article, and I didn't want to confuse him too. But this is the, this is the looking forward one that we need here. Hockey enrollment, minor hockey enrollment is down. So I don't think this may affect this at all, but a cute article last week had the City of Ottawa putting forward a recreation item that was said that they should close all single rink arenas in the City of Ottawa, which amounted to over 56 arenas. It was just put out as a, as an item that hadn't been voted on or discussed anyway. Fairly significant when you think of a city that size reducing 56 ice pads instead of adding them, as they were 20 or 30 years ago. So I think that's, I don't, we probably have a look at going down the road, but right now, we keep rinks going pretty hot and heavy for five, six months of the year, and that's, that's where, that's where we want to be again, when we get on the road going, so. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Ostrander. I have to say, I agree with pretty much everything that everybody has said here. When our rink was in operation, the report that we got from staff at the time, if memory serves me correctly, was that only 20% of its usage was coming from Prescott residents. And yet, Prescott residents were paying 100% of the cost of operating that facility. As it stands right now, we don't have a rink, and that 20% of our population that used to use our rink is now using the two rinks in Edwardsburg Cardinal. And just like I didn't feel it was fair, we bore the entire burden for that rink when 80% of its usage was from outside of town, I feel that it's only fair that we contributed to the operation of the two rinks in Edwardsburg Township, and we don't have one. And going forth, when we do have a rink, and you notice I say "when" we do have a rink, not if we have a rink. I think this provides a way that the operational cost will be shared based on the populations of the two townships and Prescott. And to Councilor Ostrander's point about minor hockey registration going down, I referred to recreational master plan earlier when the current club was here, and I read through this thing again today, when I knew they were coming. And something sticks out in my mind that I saw in there, was one of the recommendations, or one of the observations, pardon me, that they had, and that it would be that using demand from younger members of the community would be less in the foreseeable future, and requirements for recreation from older members of the community would increase. So I think this goes to that point. And as far as Mayor Sayaw's article, I noticed you had it, Councilor Janisman, and I read it through a couple of times today, just like you did, and you could read a lot of things out of that, and you can make figures, say anything that you want, really. What I pulled out of that is that you didn't really think we needed a third rink in our area, and who knows, you may be right, you may not be, but what we have right now is the rink at Cardinal that has been replaced, we have our rink, which is down and is going to be replaced, we have the Sentinel Youth Arena in Brockville built about the same time, it's planned for replacement, the only one that's left is one in Cardinal, I'm sorry, Expensable. So its lifespan, I think, is questionable. And when it is finally decommissioned, if we don't have a new rink here, that leaves us with one rink in the area, and that is certainly not enough for local demand. So I think it's getting ahead of the curve, so to speak, and building this rink now for the use of our three municipalities going down the road. So before I call the votes, does anybody have any other thing they want to add? Mayor Todd?
Just really quick in relation to those points, as Matthew did mention, one of the big issues, I mean, people can, you can make that argument however you want, too many rinks, perhaps, and three, I don't subscribe to that, as I had a conversation last week with President South Grandville Minor Hockey, and they've canceled all tournaments for this year again, because they simply don't have the ice time to be able to block out a Saturday, Sunday for it. So it's that, it's that prime time use. You can say, oh, you don't need three arenas, because there's a certain amount of vacant ice. Yeah, but the vacant ice is one o'clock on Tuesday afternoon, and it's not prime time. And that's what, that's what this will fill. The problem of that is, of course, we've still got to maintain the buildings, so it is going to be a hit to us, because we've got to maintain the buildings whether we're getting rental hours or not. But the other thing I just really want to note on this, because I think it's key for selling this as well, is that we're not just looking at this as a Prescott first initiative. If you take the arena out of this, at the end of the day, we don't say we don't get the funding, we all hope that's not the case, at the end of the day, we are still committing, as Council Janisman mentioned, to paying our fair share for our residents in the Cardinal Expensable Rink. So this is a win-win scenario in every way I can see with Edwardsburg Cardinal. If our arena comes on board, they save operational money. If our arena doesn't come on board, they're still going to save money, because we're going to be paying directly to them. This is exactly the type of regional cost sharing we should be looking at. It's a great area to kind of put our toe in the water and test this out, and I think it, I think it just works in every possible way. So I'm really excited about taking this forward to the two councils and making, making our best case for it. So I think with this, it really solidifies our application for other funding. Thank you.
Okay, we kicked this to the out. So I'll read the motion again. The committee of the hall endorse the concept of the sharing of net operating costs to the South Grandville community centers and break forward this proposal to the township of Augusta and the township of Edwardsburg Cardinal Municipal Councils. All in favor? Carrie. On to staff reports on the 4th, 2019. LG approved small business and trade show in-kind facility fee waiver application. That is impactful. The motion raises, the committee of the hall directs staff to administer the extension of the LG small business and trade show rental of the Leo Boyden Community Center to include March 4th, 5th, 2019, as, and this is going to be a typo, and in-kind support for the event rather than in-keen support for the event. Somebody had a particular king that they wanted to donate? Oh, okay, so it is in-kind and support to the event. Can I have a mover and a second for that motion, please? Councilor Burden, Councilor Janisman. Katie, I believe you're on tap. You've been sitting here very patiently all evening to speak to this, would you care to do so?
Great. There's actually another typo that I'd like to first address, that dates, dates I was speaking of are March 4th and 5th, 2020. So I'm happy to report that the LG-approved small business and trade show will take place again at Prescott in March, 2020. They have rented the facility for Friday and Saturday to host the event, and are looking for some in-kind support to waive the rent fee, to help with their setup and preparations. They're looking to gain access on Wednesday, March 4th, from noon until 8:00 p.m., and on Thursday, March 5th, for a full day from 8:00 a.m. until 8:00 p.m., just to allow access for some of the setup materials to come in and vendors to get all set. So this will be the second year that the event will be taking place at the Leo Boyden Community Center. I believe you'll recall, we did similar donations to the event last year. And 100% of the admissions collected at the event are intended to be donated to the new arena fundraising efforts. And the event will be open to the public on Friday, March 6th, from 3:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m., and on Saturday, March 7th, from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. at the community center.
Any questions? Any comments? Councilor Ostrander.
Katie, just wondering, last year was the first year of the new format and time of year of the event. I just wondered, was there any feedback concerning, particularly, we had held it in June at Cardinal while we were here at the Leo as well? Just wondered, does the time of year cause any comments, or was there any negative or positive feedback from that aspect of it?
Sure. To the Mr. Chair. I believe that the LG-approved trade show, I'm not even certain about what was occurring in Brockville, I believe it was a similar time of year, but he has made an effort to create his create this rental on a date outside of the March break. So, I can't speak on behalf of the event organizer, but there must have been some feedback surrounding that. It was very well attended.
Right, yes, of course. Thank you. Do we know how many people attended last year? Did you?
No, and we did receive a large donation from them, as two elder admissions, so we could...
A large... 5,000 bucks, 1,000 bucks, 2,000 bucks?
I mean, we'll have to check.
Okay, if you don't know this, fine, I just thought it might be one of those... Okay. I'm presuming it says here somewhere, I don't know where I have it, we have facility rental fees requesting to be waived as 1,000 bucks, that's 20 hours. I'm presuming that we are going to have to pay staff for 20 hours to be at the rink with at least one person?
A large amount of the hours that they're requesting are during regular daytime operating hours, but there would be some staff time as well.
Okay, so it's not, there's just not donating in free time, it's actually going to cost us something to donate this. And at the end of the day, their fees that they're charging to do are going to come back to us, so odds are we're at least going to break even in the thing. Oh, that's right. Sorry, I wonder where you went. Okay, Councillor Shinkar did declare a conflict of interest on this earlier, and he's such a little fellow, just noticed he was missing now. Anybody have any comments on this, questions? Councillor Burden.
I'd like to go ahead and support this motion. I mean, it was very well attended last year, very well received, was promoting small businesses and trades, so I definitely think that we... I would like to support this motion.
Okay. The other thing I have to hear a lot is being fair across the community, because we do get other requests to have the community center free, and I know we can't, one of those not ongoing, so we're able to make other arrangements, however. But, the long and the short of it is, they are paying for rental on the days that they're operating, so that is definite, and they're asking for a show overseas, so to speak. So, no other comments, I'll read them all. The Committee of the Hall endorses the concept of the shared... whoops. We already got that one. The Committee of the Hall directs staff to administer the extension of the LG Small Business and Trade Show rental of the Leo Boyden Community Center to include March 4th and 5th, 2020, as an in-kind support to the event. All favor?
Sorry, I just wanted to make one quick comment. Could we actually ask staff, I mean, I don't know how we could look at this, but I think maybe the opportunity, maybe the agreement, because obviously, it's always going to need a setup, time, how other events roll as well. Is there a way we can just include this as a part of the course, so this doesn't have to come back to us? Especially if there's a way we can make it work during business hours, because any sort of larger scale event is going to require this. So, that's my one concern, it's just going to keep coming back. Is there a way to work that into the application?
Certainly, if you can come back with that.
If you rent for two days, you need X number of hours, and there's got to be some to automate this, rather than bring it back to us, because we've already seen, this is what the fourth or fifth request we've already had to waive the fees. It's getting to the point where, why do we have the operating agreement? Not that I don't fully support this, because I do, but I just, I'd love to be able to automate this, so this isn't coming back for special exceptions.
Okay, we can come back with a suggestion around the policy. I think it varies from each one to each one, because that's when we're talking about basically a 50-50 between the hours we pay and the hours that are not-not, so we'll try to develop a policy around that.
If I could just, through you, please. I mean, I don't know if there's any way with this, I imagine because of businesses, some will have to come in off-hours, but I mean, that to me would be more the exception of the law, and if you've got somebody that's renting it for a day or two days, we should be including some sort of setup time where it's giving. But I mean, there's fairly minor tweaks in that regard, and it will, of course, vary on that. Just putting it there.
Actually, that's a very good idea, but the setups during normal business hours that we're going to provide for free.
Yeah.
Because I, speaking personally, I was a member of the, quote, Henson and Holman Recreation Show for many years down there, and I always set up during the daytime, that's what you did, and Henson provided security after hours, but, so, I don't know if you really want to participate in this, I think it all goes to your business to do the hiring that they want to set up and screen. Anyway, I've read the motion. All those in favor? Motion has carried. Thank you, Katie. I think along economic development, bio planning, and heritage, Councillor Janzman, there's nothing under your portfolio tonight officially, is there anything you would like to add or comment on or bring forth, or a joke you want to tell or anything like that?
No, I don't have to tell one.
All right. Wastewater and water, there's nothing on your line this evening either. Protective services, the community aids on, Councillor Holmstrander?
Nothing really, just a reminder that the Food for All Food Bank, Spaghetti Supper is ready to fireball from 4:00 to 6:00, I believe. Everybody courage to attend and support the food bank. Also, I checked up the insurance, I believe, with the firemen getting recognized, is it next week? For a long service, I don't know, I think there's street fireworks next week, the object of your service.
That's it for me. Very good, thank you. Capital projects, Councillor Burden?
Nothing other than...
Very good. New business, I'd like to comment on the action item list this evening. Councillor Burden?
Thank you. I would like to add into the action list the council expense policy and the social media policy. I would like the CDs policies completed before we go into the budget process, especially the council expense policy. I think it's important, it's one of these policies that both of them actually have been slipping through the cracks, so I'd like to definitely get those policies completed.
And that was the council expense policy, I'm sorry, what was the other one?
And the council, and the social media policy.
Mr. Armstrong? They're completed, pending review by our working group, which would be members of council, who would be, just remembering, I want to know, Councillor Young, Councillor Shinkar, and Mayor Todd. Okay. Can we leave it up to you to try and gloss all those three characters and keep it moving on, and very good to council ASAP?
Absolutely.
Thank you very much, well, that'd be satisfactory.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Let's see, new business, anybody? Period for media questions. We have two media in the audience tonight, after all this, unsure there must be questions. No? Very well. We have a closed session, so we, I don't know how long we're going to be, but you're right, I guess. Councillor Janzman, I believe you have that motion?
We found this outside by Councilman Khan, the committee have called resolve into council move into closed session at 8:30 to address the matter pertaining to purchase and sale in the S E O, Treasury and Deputy Department of Freedom.
All favor? Carry it. Take five, and we'll...